I'm going to call a meeting, a regular meeting of the board to order. I would announce that we had an executive session at 6:30 this evening for the purpose of discussing personal. Um, I'm going to ask you to rise and talk in your lives fully. I'm going to ask you to stand for a moment in silence for a social studies speaker to pass away in the back of the chair. I'm Gilbert.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Keller, here. Mrs. Mount. Mrs. Cozart, here. Dr. Lawson, here.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. Gordon. Here. Thank you, Mrs. Wiger. We're going to, um, the first few hearing visitors, part one, and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board about anything that's on this evening's agenda. Um, if anyone would wish to address the board, please come to the podium and state your name now. Seeing none, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Cozart, who will introduce the Bots IQ National Championship team.
My great pleasure to introduce Mr. Pedder, Mrs. Moritz, and Mrs. Wymer to celebrate our national championship.
We all greatly welcome that. Yeah. We all greatly appreciate you having us here this evening. I'm not going to speak too much as you'll find out, because this is for young men and young women, they all like to speak, so we'll give them all an opportunity this evening. Uh, myself, very proud of this group of kids. Um, I have to tell you that I've been around public schools, teams that have won second championships, state championships, um, all of the such, and these kids have been ecstatic and excited about this victory, and that ain't that I've ever seen. Um, so with that, I'd like to introduce the two advisors that are here with me this evening. I don't think this is where we come from, but loud. Uh, Mr. Moritz, who is our mechatronics instructor at the CCC, and Mr. Pedder, who's our machine tool technology instructor at the school. I'll give them both an opportunity to speak briefly, starting with Mr. Moritz. And Mr. Pedder, I promise you, it wouldn't have been wrong.
I don't need a mechatronics. Um, as you all know, uh, the mechatronics engineering program and the machine tool technology program that Mr. Pedder teaches have always been the, the two shops that, that have partnered together for Bots IQ. We've been doing, uh, BattleBots since the beginning, eight years now, this is our eighth year, and, um, the first year that I was involved, seven years ago, we took a, we took our, uh, robot groundhog to Nationals in Miami and got fourth place in the nation. And then ever since then, we've kind of been the pride bait and won second place all the time. So it's been a long time coming, and, um, Mr. Pedder and I always say the same thing over and over again, it's, it's the kids that make the bot. Uh, that's what we're more proud of than anything, is this is not a store bought product. It's not made by an outside company. It's designed, engineered, and manufactured in our school by our students, so it's really all of them that deserve all the credit.
Um, also, I'm, I've only been teaching for eight years, so it's an industry for twenty-five years, and, um, uh, there is no greater industrial model than bots. As far as getting them prepared, there's a deadline, there's tolerances, and there's requirements. So, and if you do not meet all the requirements, then you do not compete. That's the way it is. If you're not ready by the time everybody else is ready, you do not compete. Welcome to life. It's a wonderful competition, and I'm very proud that these students have started it. And I'm proud to have, be the guy in the background in the cave, spend a lot of time with the machines, so, um, it's a good group, really impressive.
Students, why don't you want to sign and introduce something, maybe tell a little bit about your experience? Starting back with Corbin, we're going to get a show call.
Okay, I'm from Lakewood, I'm a senior this year, I'm going to have Corbin's head. And, uh, I'm part of the mechatronics program at, uh, Patrick School.
My name is Gina Baker, um, I'm a senior engineer. Um, this is my career in the next time for them, and I'm a senior in Bots IQ, and it's been awesome.
Tell a little bit, you, come back, you, a little bit about your experience in Indianapolis, if they don't know, any, anything on.
Well, we took a seven-hour drive down to Indianapolis, and, uh, that was hard. For, um, seven, seven kids in bed, and, yeah, we had like nine people towed us.
It only felt like twelve hours, though.
Yeah. But, uh, I had a roommate, I had a room with, um, four other guys, with three other guys, so that was kind of cramped, too. But other than that, but the experience was kind of was fun, it was, uh, challenging, the competition was...
I didn't want that.
Yeah, it was different from our region, we could get to Cal U and win second to Cal U. Uh, it was a little bit more fast-paced at, uh, Nationals.
It was more of a, like, uh...
But, uh, we started out kind of rough, uh, going into it, but we eventually, there were a couple of hangups in the first one, so. We, uh, basically made it through the first match, second match, we started back, we were doing better, but then we got a driving, like, downhill path, and we were just joining them after that.
Did any of you see Corbin's spot or the team's spot, Corbin spoke on the channel in local news for Indianapolis, or hear about it?
Yeah, they went all over Indiana.
I embarrassed myself on statewide TV.
It was nerdy.
I filmed, but, uh, I thought I heard some bros, I had a...
It was like twenty minutes, because we were two seniors, and I got Corbin's head, and then he gets up there, and he's like, oh.
It was five in the morning as well, right?
Yeah, it wasn't five in the morning for that, that was nice. Um, but I just want to say, I mean, I won't, I mean, I've been in robotics for years, like, in general, like, in thousand seventh grade, and it always seemed like I was the team that, you know, oh, we just got there, or, you know, we're getting next year, but now we're finally, I'm finally on to where we finally got them, and it feels wonderful, it's like dreams come true, and, um, you know, I'm blessed with a great team of engineers and machinists and everybody else.
Where are you going after graduation?
Oh, New York.
I'm going to Cal U for the mechatronics program, for your bachelor's degree.
And, um, I'm going to University of Dayton for a bachelor's in, um, electrical engineering and a focus in robotics.
Um, I'm Gina Ferro, I'm in the machine tool program, and I'm from Lakewood. This is my first year in machine tool, and at first, I was a hundred percent part of the Bots team, but towards the end, I basically ended up joining, and I'm glad I did, it was a fun experience, especially seeing all the different bot designs, and seeing what everyone can create, and then that we went and won Nationals, it was just awesome.
My name is Abby Green, I'm from Derek. I, it is my first year in machine tool, and I was just really glad that we could all have this experience together, it was such an awesome meeting, with great instructors to help us through the whole thing, and I'm just really glad that we won, and it was a great learning experience for us.
I'm Dave Lochner, I'm a junior here at Lakewood. This is my second year in the machine tool program, uh, first year with Bots. I'd say the experience was phenomenal, meeting all a bunch of new people, becoming new friends, and bonding with teammates in a hotel room for two nights.
And the band.
And the band. It was great, I loved it.
Uh, our other teammate, Chris Dean, this is junior at Lakewood, couldn't be here today, so, it's worth the recognition as well.
Please, uh, second year, machine tool technology student.
Chris is at work right now, he can't get up.
Yeah, well, we'll excuse him.
We have a video that we brought through this evening, somebody presented to watch, most of David's seat, and if you watch the video, you'll see six tabs on photos, take and draw the course of the trip, and they are on the seat line. And then we have some footage from the average competition, uh, the battles, unfortunately, the, the last battle, you see on here, the battle that, um, that destroyed our bot. Uh, we, and nobody really explained that, I would have a crack at you one, let's go.
And, uh, the scoring of judges do down in competitions is more than just winning the actual battle, it takes place, it takes part of the documentation you put together, basically get the record, everything you did, your bot, all the drawings, previous designs you had, um, your plans up to the original, like, the design you have now, what the original one was, you stress tested, and saw what it was designed, or if you're, like, modeling on it, you all put it into a, uh, binder, and that is great while you're down there, too, and that's, you know, part of your, uh, your grade, your, uh, for score you get at the end. And, uh, they also take place in, when they're actually in the battle, uh, your maneuvering capabilities of your robot, and your ability to get underneath them, push them around, get hits on them, too, and, uh, they, that all adds up for the grand champion award, and the second place we got actually came from, uh, we made it through all the battles except for the last one, and, uh, all of our pieces on a robot were actually the original pieces that we used during the national regional competition, where we probably should have machined some extra pieces, but, uh, we didn't, and, um, the parts were already out when we started from movement, we went into it new, in order to do that good with a bot that already went through forty-eight schools, was pretty good, and coming second to the last battle of the grand champion overall, with all of us four added up.
It was also really awesome, because even though we lost, it was still fantastic. But, I mean, your odds were going to be it was going to happen, but it's just the coolest man ever.
It's cool, they're still running.
Yeah, well, I would have wanted to get beat, it would be, so I couldn't bring a bot home and actually run it, but keep in mind, at the end of the match, our robot's still mine.
... consideration on the battle scores, the engineering scores, and the document scores, and consideration for the win of this board. This, this means, well, it just means everybody else, and they also get to win a five hundred dollar prize as well, so that's pretty cool. Um, again, before we finish this, I can't go within the industry for this, for Lakewood based, so I guess I'm supposed to announce the absolute winner.
I say enthusiastic. Well, I say enthusiastic.
The winner?
Yeah.
Okay. Winner, random word, winner of this ARL contest is... Aider!
That's what's left of our bottom holding.
Yes!
Indianapolis, did you?
No, I'm not. He was at, uh, University of Purdue.
Chris, we'd like to take a look at them, and we are just so incredibly proud of all of you and, and everything that you've done to, um, bring recognition to us here also, because you are our students, so we would like to, um, present you with... And Michaela, you are, congratulations. Good luck in the future.
He's going to have my eye.
And Christine's not here.
He's supposed to have the pictures, but we did look at ours, yeah. Gets the pictures.
And Gina, you are, congratulations Gina, thanks for all the work. And Abigail, sorry, you got, congratulations, Abigail. And David, congratulations. And, uh, Corbin?
Yep.
Congratulations, thanks for coming and sharing all that with us, we're incredibly proud of all you've done, and good luck to all of you in the future, hope to see you back again next year.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, everybody. We got to pack up our trophies, we're going this way? Yeah, don't forget the trophy. Take this back.
Mr. Wymer.
Anybody want to hold one?
It's like passing a cup.
I got one of those group bots, if you guys were...
Oh, yeah, he made the board out.
One.
Well, he's starting to get sloppy, he's, 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 he's starting out like, always the next champion, I got.
Always going.
He's got to go to kind of a party, he's, he's, he's...
Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys, standing here.
Thank you.
I will move for adoption of resolution number two hundred and thirty-seven, the approval of minutes from the regular meeting, how we able to control it, and the community of all meetings, held on May fourteenth. My question is, thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we approve the minutes from those meetings. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor that have approved the minutes, please say aye. Aye, aye, anyone to post? They cast your name, so. Solicitors, report, Mr. May.
Yes, we have, uh, tonight, school tax exoneration for the St. Benedict Parish. Uh, this was for, um, some additional construction of their properties, and, um, this property has basically been taxed exempt from the time that it had been built, but this is going back to the time that, um, the property was first built, it, it took some period of time until they got the, uh, approval from the county, so, uh, I would ask, uh, recommend that we move on resolution two thirty-eight, school tax exoneration, St. Benedict Parish.
Senator?
Sir.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number two hundred and thirty-eight, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone to post? That passes your name, so. Thank you, Mr. Nangle. Is that all you have? Yes, thank you. Um, I will move for resolution of, uh, adoption of resolution number two thirty-nine to approve, uh, tuition scheme for the new year. That's it. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Um, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye, anyone to post? I will move for adoption of resolution number two hundred and forty to adopt tuition rates for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year, and you can see that elementary went up, uh, ten dollars and ninety-five cents, but secondary actually went down, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-five cents, making, um, this year's elementary tuition, seven thousand seventeen dollars and seventy, seventy-two cents, and secondary, seven, seven thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-one cents. No? That's... It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number two forty, you did second it.
No, I was questioning the numbers you were using, because the actual numbers for two thousand twelve, thirteen are seven thousand twenty-eight, sixty-seven, elementary and secondary is seven thousand two hundred and twenty-one.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that was correct.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Um, do I hear a second on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number two forty, please say aye. Aye, anyone to post? That passes your name, so. I will also move for adoption of resolution number two hundred and forty-one to approve the extended, um, school year program, uh, services agreement between DLSC and, and the store, the cost of a hundred eighty dollars a day for students. Senator? It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number two forty-one. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone to post? That passes your name, so. That is my report, and I'll go to Mr. Keller for final.
Thank you. I will, uh, put together resolution number two hundred and forty-two, pressure the report in number two forty-three, payment of bill data made coming first, or we move for adoption of both of them.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer? It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolutions number two forty-two and two forty-three, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone to post? That passes your name, so.
And before I move for adoption of resolution number two four four, I'd like to change the wording, um, rather than smart boards, the resolution should read interactive white boards and student response systems. So please change it before we, so that we don't have to amend it. So with that changed in the motion, I'll move for adoption of the resolution to accept a gift of, um, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, a grant from the Grand Lakewood Parkers Education Foundation.
Senator? It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number two hundred and forty-four. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
I think that it should be noted that one of these will be in every classroom in the Union High, so there are forty-eight of the interactive white boards and the system, so this will be in place next year in the Union High, and it's a wonderful first contribution from the foundation and, and stuff, which I'll be very grateful for.
Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor of adopting resolution number two forty-four, please say aye. Aye, anyone to post? That passes your name, so.
Remove for adoption of resolution number two forty-five, the general fund for post final operating budget in the amount of forty-nine million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. No vote?
Senator? It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution number two hundred and forty-five. Questions or discussion on that?
I'd like to just say that, um, staff and, um, teachers and all of us working here, people have learned, I think it's an achievement, it should be appreciated by the folks, and I think everybody, for very, very part, to get it where it is this year, and I think that, uh, the, you know, the surprise that, you know, all the questions, discussions we had, was nobody here tonight to talk about it, but, um, for the constituency, but, um, I truly am amazed that we're, yeah, that it happens to be the known mind of this, to the share, part of our area, you know, and...
And I'd like to say that at our last meeting, the presentation that we had, um, done by the administration, really was very enlightening, and after all the discussions that we had and brought all together, and I've been carrying it around with me for two weeks, hoping that somebody would ask to look at it, but once again, but it still happened, if anybody's interested.
They all know about it.
So you did acquire it, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion?
We'll have a long, all the, the cases, is Keller? Yeah, Mrs. Cozart, yes, Dr. Lawson, yes, Dr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Yes, that's what you asked. And I'll put together resolution number two forty-six to appoint the Act five eleven tax collectors, and number two forty-seven, the designation of the depository, and move for adoption of both of those.
Senator? It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolutions number three forty-six and two forty-seven. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone to post? That passes your name.
And...
The move is seconded, we adopt resolutions number 346 and 247. Any questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed?
And I will put together, um, the next reading, um, resolution number 248, to reappoint the school district treasurer, number 249, to authorize investment of funds for 2013 and '14, and number 250, to approve the request of the city of the throw for disposition of tax revenue records, and move for adoption of those three.
Thank you. The move is seconded, we adopt resolutions number 248, 249, and 250. Any questions or discussion on any of those resolutions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? I also pass unanimously.
And finally, I'll move for adoption of resolution number 251, to approve an agreement with the corner, Widel and Tarek PC, for audit services.
Thank you. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 251. Any questions or discussion on that motion?
I would like to, um, give a little kudo to Mr. Watson for renegotiating that and all the other renegotiations that he's done over the last year, which is what, um, Mr. Palmer spoke about earlier, the things that have been done to cut the expenses of the school district, and I, I think that, um, Mr. Watson has done a wonderful job in all those negotiations as well as in preparing the budget.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? They pass unanimously. That's end of my report. Thank you, Mrs. Delver. Property supply is cut off.
Thank you. I move to be adopted resolution number 252, the bid award for the tread hills in the amount of $6,970.
Thank you. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 252. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed?
I also move for the adoption of resolution number 253, permission advertised for bids for the paved and line law, um, paving and LES, and the seal and line law, the bag with that.
Second. Thank you. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 253. Questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? They pass unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Coda, who is in. Thank you. Dr. Loplin, student activities and recreation.
Uh, this says, "There's the student athletic recreation ceremony tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. in all the four hours." That's all else. I hope your board is not here, considering anything under 200, under 2000 regulations. I will move for adoption of resolution number 254, uh, 54, to award WIU joint purchasing bid for gasoline and vehicle fuel.
Second. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 254. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? They pass unanimously. E W C T C Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Coda.
We're policy, P S D, the liaison, P S D A, the liaison, Dr. Yes, to do the P S D A liaison first, um, I think it should be noted that Senator Kim Ward, all this has been attempting to, um, help us with something having to do with transportation, money is, um, I don't know, allocated, I can't even write words, uh, but it, it was a bill that she had planned to present on the floor of the Senate, and, um, actually, as it evolved with amendments and so forth, it became something that we were not as happy with. So I was informed today by P S D A that they are putting out a statement, uh, sending a letter to Senator Ward, thanking her for her efforts, but asking her to please wait until, um, further development comes, and that letter will go out probably, um, tomorrow or Thursday, so that if any of you want to get in touch with Senator Ward and thank her for her efforts on our behalf, that would be very appropriate, and, um, about board policy, there will be a meeting on, um, Thursday, the, let's see, June 6th, at 2:30, before the property supply committee, um, to, um, write a new policy, um, and we would welcome anyone to attend.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Delver. Transportation, Dr. Mott?
Uh, yes, there's, um, this, uh, information in your pocket, and, um, again, uh, there's some airs, um, transportation contract, and I think that would be a whole piece of, like, say, above the very large, uh, R and B, and, uh, it does not matter whether I write it or not, so I think, uh, for...
Thank you, Dr. Mott. Technology, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you. I would ask the board to approve, um, the resolution 255, to approve the CCL technology contract, it's been a motion we've used for the last few years, uh, the numbers are good, and I work hard to get there, and I believe we have, uh, go back.
Second. Thank you. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 255. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? They pass unanimously. Anything else, Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Superintendent's recommendation, Mrs. Delver?
I ask the board to move on resolution number 256, which is a date change for Carol Wright, senior high school and modern science teacher, uh, date of graduation to be changed to Tuesday, August 20th, 2013.
The move.
Sorry.
The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 256. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed?
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 257, which are three regulations listed, a student girl soccer coach, and a classroom assistant, Marissa Wood, and Howard basketball.
The move. Second. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 257. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed?
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 258, which is an administrative support realignment of that time free. I would ask the board to approve the realignment with the move of Mr. Jeff Ingle, who is now the junior high school principal, to senior high school assistant principal, which will be effective July 1st, 2013.
The move. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 258. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Mrs. Lager, we need a little call, but please...
Mrs. Coda? Yes. Dr. Loplin? Yes. Dr. Mott?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Delver?
Yes.
And Mrs. Music?
Yes. They pass unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 259, which is also administrative support realignment. I'd ask the school board if they would please approve or move the recommendation of Mr. Chad Freilich, who is now the senior high school assistant principal, to the junior high school principal effective July 1st, 2013.
The move. Second. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 259. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Roll call that, Mrs. Lager.
Yes. Dr. Mott?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Delver?
Yes.
Mrs. Coda?
Yes.
And Mrs. Music? Yes. They pass unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 260, which is the appointment of free professional, um, teaching recommendations, Teresa Malatney as the elementary guidance of that new elementary, um, beginning, uh, the next school year, Joseph McComby, helping physical education teacher, and Patrick Townsend, helping physical education teacher. All of these positions are released due to retirement.
The move. Second. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 260. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? They pass unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 261, which is the support personnel that are listed, head girl basketball coach, Luann Mills, assistant girl basketball coach, Brittany Sedhoff, senior high school cheerleading sponsor, Amy Steffi, senior high school cheerleading assistant, Elizabeth Craig, and junior high school cheerleading sponsor, Sarah Freder.
The move. Second. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 261. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? They pass unanimously.
I make the recommendation of number 262, to approve the employee benefit and pay plans as described for the personnel works listed.
The move. Second. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 262. Any questions or discussion on that motion?
Now, it should be noted that it runs for two years, and they haven't frozen the resolutions.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor then, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? They pass unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 263, which is the granting of tenure for, uh, a junior, or senior high school army support teacher, Bridget O'Keefe.
The move. Second. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 263. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? They pass unanimously.
And last is resolution number 264, which is to approve the honorary driver education instructors for the 2013-2014 school year.
The move. Second. The move is seconded, we adopt resolution number 264. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
They're paid through payroll, they're supposed to, as an employee in the district, are, they are required to be paid through payroll.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? They pass unanimously. Any other business, any other business that's going before the board's meeting?
Note the graduation is next Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. Or 7:00 p.m. I think every year they change the time, although I never do mention it. So it's at seven o'clock on Tuesday.
Any other business that we board the board? And it's time for hearing the visitors, part two. Anyone in the audience can now address a word on any subject. If you wish to do so, please, uh, find a podium and say your name and act. And I will maintain a Russian cool attorney.
Second. Waste no time.